He'll discuss our utilities in a, in a, in a summary fashion. And then we will open up the floor and then we'll move on and finish our meeting following that. Santos?
Mayor Councilmembers, thank you very much. Before you have the Fund Thirty-Five or utility budget for the current year. Basically, the methodology this year was really to get with our division managers and, and assess what are the needs? I mean, I know that you asked, are these wants or are these needs? I can assure you that the positions that we've requested and not placing the budget are, are the needs of the divisions. And, and that's, that's important from the financial aspect because I don't want, what can you do without? I want, what do you need? So we can provide optimal services to the citizens of Pierceaw. And, and basically, that's what we did. Those were some positions that came there at tail end, we had already printed the budget. But yeah, they're the needs and I would like to include them going forward and fund them. So at least we can assess what the actual expenditures are, including the salary survey. Taking every, every employee up to the minimum amount of, you know, based on, on the market. And it's important from, from, from the perspective that it really, the salary study, it provides us with an ability to control costs. If we know exactly what cost there is for each position and that those positions roll into the budget. And I can tell you exactly what, what salaries and who, who are tied to them. Up until this budget, that wasn't possible because we didn't have position control. So as of right now, every salary dollar that's within the budget is tied to an individual. And that is the minimum based on the salary study that we did. So I'm, I'm happy with, with the progress that we're making. The revenues that you see are only projections I expect to work on continually throughout the budget process. They were projections based on estimates that I used, based on history. And based on the rates that we anticipate going forward, especially in the utility side. Based on no tax increase on the, on the general fund side. But it does give us a basis. This is where, these are our needs expenditure wise in both our governmental side and our business side. And these are, this is the revenue that we anticipate should be able to fund it. The budget isn't balanced. We can balance it. But I don't, I would like to take off the table of, of cutting the budget because that's what we need. Not what we want. Everybody wants more people, everybody wants more equipment, everybody wants more, more resources. But like, like, like we all know, the resources are limited. And so that's, that's going to be the methodology to balance the budget. And, and I'm glad to hear that, that you're committed to, to the future. As, as the mayor indicated, that we're at the, the tail end of the useful life of our capital equipment, our infrastructure. So the decisions that you make going forward will impact the city for the next forty years. Either we, we, we make the commitment, the financial commitment. And that may include raising taxes because we have to fund the infrastructure improvements. What, what the city did forty years ago was exactly that. They funded it through debt. They, they had the taxes to fund it. And, and we're reaping the benefits of that right now. But going forward, that's not possible anymore. Our infrastructure is, 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 I wouldn't want to say decrepit or anything like that, but it is, it is older. It's, it's more prone to, to failures. And, and the problem with, with, with all of this is that we don't have the, the funds to, 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 I guess, address any critical failures. I mean, the, the last thing that we want is not being able to produce water or not being able to flush our toilets. So that's, that's, that's the, the mentality that I have. Can we absorb a critical failure in our systems? And the answer is no, we cannot. And, and there's a, there's a lot of reasons for it. I think at the beginning of my, my tenure, I did make a projection. I did, at the beginning of the pandemic at least, we did go through a, a presentation where we could see our cash flow going down simply because our tax rate remained the same and our sales tax went down. So it's, 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 it's just like anything else. Not enough money coming in, more money going out. And that's the way municipalities usually work. But that was the, the, the thought process that I had with our division managers. And, and I'm happy with, with where we landed, at least preliminary wise. I think that it, from the expense perspective, it's a good budget. And from the utility side, it's, it's different than the, than the, the general fund side simply because there's no waitressing room, our rates are our rates. Okay, and our needs are our needs. There's a, there's a cost to providing service and that cost never goes down. And the quality is always expected from the citizens. They want clean water, they want to be able to flush their toilets, they want the pressure to take a shower. So it's more difficult to, to budget from that perspective because we have limited revenues. There is nothing that will come in extra unless we somehow grow by ten thousand citizens, which is not going to happen. So from that perspective, from the financing perspective, how do I fund it? It has to be through the general fund side. They're the, they're, they have the flexibility to increase taxes. And that if I don't have, we don't have the rates, even though we have an increase of five percent for the next five years, it's, it's still not enough. If we don't have the rates and we have the needs, then it has to come from our governmental side. From, that's, that's the mentality. That's how we balance a budget with limited resources. And that's something that I want to convey to you all going forward that it's, it, it will take a commitment to, to plan for the future. And there's going to be a cost to it. And, and, and like anything else, there's, 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 everybody's not, doesn't accept change too much, especially if they cost more money. But the alternative is not being able to provide services. And that's, that's where we are. The risk is that if we have a catastrophic, catastrophic failure, we can't secure the money with debt to fix that catastrophic failure. And we have to boil our water for the, for the next five years because nobody will lend us the money. And that cascades into a situation where we can't make payroll, that we can't keep our employees. I've been involved with those types of situations and it's not fun, at least from the finance perspective, overlapping resources, not paying our, our vendors so we can operate. So with that, with that mentality, that's how we developed this budget. And I wanted, I wanted to convey that to you that, that there's going to, there is going to be commitment. What's presented isn't a wishlist, isn't a, a dream, dream thing. It's, it's, it's the needs and they're, and they're dire. And I'll put it that way. Because I see the financials every day. And the saving grace this year was the federal government, the money that we received in excess. And it will continue the next year when we see that one point two million dollars, it will help. The one point two million after that will help. But it's not the answer. The answer is, is operationally setting up our, our finances to sustain us for the next forty years. And that's going to take a commitment from you, a commitment to, to accept what rates we need, what tax rate we need in conjunction with where our sales tax are. Because that's the only revenue that comes in besides utility side, besides the utility. And this anomaly of the pandemic and governmental funding, it's a one-time deal. It's never going to happen again, probably in our lifetimes. You'll never see that money come into us like that again. And it's, it's great, but from the finance perspective, we have to understand that we need to be able to, to, to get the city to a place that it's never been before. And I'm, I'm willing to help do that. I'm willing to, to provide, you know, my insights, my, my experience to, to float the bonds that are necessary to complete the infrastructure, to raise water towers, things of that nature. But, you know, I, I, I can't increase rates and I can't increase tax rates and things like that. And, you know, by nature, I'm fiscally conservative. And it takes a lot for me to say, well, we need to increase taxes or we need to increase rates. But I have to, I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't do that. So from, from that perspective, you want to look at the, the Fund Thirty-Five. What, what we're, we're estimating as total revenue is five, five, five million, forty-nine thousand, seven-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars. And our total expenditures are five point four million dollars per deficit, deficit of three fifty-two. That's a summary sign. If you want to, if you want a breakdown, that's the very next page of that. Those are the, the revenues that, that, that we anticipate coming in. Taking into account Jeff Snow's recommendations and the increase that we're anticipating, that translates to approximately twenty-five thousand dollars extra in revenue. As, as, as we, we move forward in the budget, we're also working on, on the, on the operational side to become more efficient, to, to be able to, to meter more effectively and, and collect more effectively. And, and that certainly will help our cash flow. It, it doesn't help our revenues because when we, when we bill, we, we recognize revenues. So it will help our cash flow if we collect. Right now, we have about eight hundred thousand, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of receivables. I, I estimate that five hundred thousand of that will be uncollectible. But with that program that you mentioned, it's possible that we can collect a little bit of that uncollectible amount. It just depends what the parameters are and how long we can go back. But some of those amounts that, that, that are still in our receivable balance have been rolling over from year to year. Part of the process is to write those off every year. And, and I think that that's going to be, that's going to happen, you know, in twenty twenty-two. We certainly don't want to present any kind of financial statements with, with a huge receivable balance. Huge receivable balances indicate collection problems and they, they affect our cash, our cash balance. So that's, that's the goal. The goal is to, to shore up our, our operation, operational side, fund the needs of the, of the divisions. And also look forward to, to what, where can we, where can we foresee ourselves? What the needs are going to be in the near future, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. That's, that's where I can see we've, we've issued all our audits. We have a, a, a robust fund balance because of the governmental funds. I'd like those to roll into that event, event of all possible. And, and go out to the free market and float some bonds for, for thirty years, get some cheap money. Possibly have a capital improvement plan that includes infrastructure for the next five to ten years. Maybe floating bonds, five to ten million dollars every year. And, and, and extending that money for the benefit of the citizens. And, and, and your legacies will be that you set up the city for the next forty years. And in forty years, the, the finance director will start talking the way I'm talking, saying we're at the end of the life of what they did in, in twenty twenty. But that's, that's the, that's the mentality that trying to convey that to the vision managers. Don't give me what we can do, do, do the job with, give me what you need and we'll try to fund it. We can balance this budget. I can't say that you won't see a, a tax increase, at least that, that'll be my recommendation, if it's, if it's needed. And, and just go into the, the next budget workshop with an open mind, understanding what, what my responsibility is. And the city manager's responsibility is, is to present a budget that, that provides the city with, with the best options going forward. Any questions?
Okay, I'm going to open it up, go in order again, Brenda, would you like to? Thank you, Santos. Appreciate that very much, Brenda.
So you said that the budget, it's not budgeted, it hasn't been, how was it? It hasn't been balanced, right? And the five hundred and twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred, nine hundred and three dollars, that's not part of that, right? And where were we planning on getting that? Was it supposed to be from that, that money, from the general fund?
Well, the, the financial strategy to balance the budget will, again, depend on the revenue projections. I wouldn't say that, that the revenues are final, except for the utility side. Pretty much, ain't nothing else going to come in because of the rates that we, we've established. So if we keep the budget that we have in the utility side, then any excess that we need besides our revenues yet would have to come from our, our general fund side. And that's, that's not out of the ordinary. Usually in a, in an efficient operations, operation that's, that's humming along with, with their, their metering using utility billings, the, the business side supplements the, the, the governmental side. And that's because they can and they, they, they have the rates to create those excesses to transfer to the governmental side. That's not the case here right now. We're, we're running pretty much revenues that are generated, go to cover operational expenses plus the debt that we have. Something positive in the future, twenty twenty-two will be our first bond call date. We could refinance our twenty twelve bonds, possibly get a, a better rate or at least extend it thirty years instead of having a fifteen-year note, which will increase our cash flow and affect our, our, our debt service rate. Twenty twenty-six will be the next bond date that we can, call date that we can refinance our twenty sixteen bonds. It's important that we, we keep, that we at least be cognizant of that because we, once the, the call date passes, we, we can't go back and, and recall those bonds, the, the bond holders will keep it for the duration of, of, of the note. So that's, that's something positive in the future where we can look forward to possibly getting cheaper money, at least extending it out and, and reducing the debt service hit that we have right now.
You know, and something maybe that, that relative to about, about the deficiency of our overall budget. We're nine hundred thousand short the way it's the preliminary budget is right now. As an example, we can change the six hundred thousand in real repair to a hundred thousand. We can cut the salary survey in half and we could do away with the chamber remodel. That's nine hundred thousand. We do away with those in the budget balances or we can raise taxes or we can raise rates. So that's all of that, and I'm saying, and I'm not saying any of it is, but we can take, this is just to look at. And then what we decide as a council is a priority. That's where we'll move forward. But again, this is just a tool for us to look at. So again, I want to read it, nothing, nothing is in stone. So we've got these options available to us and we don't have to go by, by any of these, it's just a recommendation.
And part of what, particularly on Fund Thirty-Five, which is the utility fund, part of the assumption Santos has to make is, again, remember, as, as, as can councilmember Lou too, we've been in a pandemic. A lot of the revenue that we anticipated or we were looking at, we knew that we weren't going to be receiving revenue because we weren't being, again, as far as forceful with people, I'll say that as far as paying utilities and paying bills because we weren't in a pandemic. So it's hard to make the projection to say this year will be better because of X. So that's part of the reason that you see, again, some of the shortfall is, is the assumption has to be noted. Okay, is our, is our revenue going to come in for this company? Are we really going to, are we still going to be in pandemic mode? Are we still going to be, are people still going to have problems paying their regular utilities? And so those are all things that are taken into consideration. As he alluded to, he's being conservative with the revenue projection. And that's the idea is be a little more conservative revenue projection and the same thing applied on the expense side. And so, so those are things that, that I know he has to deal with, we deal with, I, I think about it as well. But that's part of the, the, what's built into the budget.
And one other thing I just want us to be cognizant of is inflation is not built into this budget correctly. And, and guys, we're in, we're on the verge, we've seen it. And so that's another thing to think about, you know? This time next year, is gas going to be two seventy a gallon? It's very likely we're going to see something different and that's going to have an impact. So again, for that reserve and the ability to meet unexpected things, we need to think about that. We're not budgeted for inflation. Okay, Brenda, do you do you have other things?
I mean, the only thing that, I mean, I was listening to some of the comments that Sonia was saying and, you know, how she was saying about how the, you know, nobody else gives anybody, gives us a break, you know? Our telephone bills, our car payments, our house payments, none of that, you know, nobody else has given us a break. And then another thing too that we have to take into consideration is that there's so many people that, that aren't working, but they're not working because they can't work. They're not working because they don't want to work. Because the unemployment is, you know, better than them going out there and getting a job. And then too, people with food stamps, I mean, their, you know, amounts have jumped up. I mean, I'm like shocked at some of the amounts that I've been hearing of. So, you know, everybody's getting a little bit of help, you know? So I'm just, I mean, I don't want to sound callous, but I mean, I don't know why we have to, either wants to owe the help.
Okay, thank you, Brenda. Is that, is that it? Councilwoman agrees?
Okay, yeah, I just have on the utilities, I was seeing the current budget. So the last, the two years before, it was, it was comparing and, you know, comparing to now is, you know, they were budgeted very high and it could be because they were hoping for oilfield money or whatever it was. And then we did have a budget during the pandemic last year and that's why we were more conservative with the numbers as well. But just, you know, getting back to the needs and the wants of employees when it comes to utility services and office staff personnel, we need to provide service and knowledge to these people. We need to not have an assistant for an assistant for an assistant. You know, you know, we've been looking, if we're going to pay top dollar, we got to get qualified people, get people that have done the job. If the, if that's the case, everybody can learn it. Everybody can learn the job. I could go and learn it and never done it. But the thing is, if we're asking for all these employees, you know, we had a city clerk and I hold her high to there and you do a great job, Crystal. But back in the day, she did seven jobs, you know? But back then, it was very, it was not as much work now, you know? But when you have, you know, you have knowledge and expertise, you're able to do all that. And don't get me wrong, Crystal, I'm not, I'm just holding up, I'm comparing and, you know, the lady, you know, I hold A B D as very high up there because that lady knew her job, you know? And when you get people that know, you don't have to keep adding employees, employees and employees to help. If somebody comes into City Hall to pay their utility bill and we have to get six people to answer the question. Oh, I don't know, let me get this person. Oh, I don't know, let's get this paper. This is where we come down to the budget, that we got to get people that know. And if they don't know, let's have training. And to have a training doesn't cost us no money because it's in-house. So my thing is, you know, going after bonds and grants, that's what we go at to keep the tax, the taxes low. We live in Pierceaw, Texas for that reason. You know, my sisters left, you know, they can go pay those high-dollar taxes. But people that want to stay in this community, they stay here for a reason because they want to know everybody. They love their town, they love the taxes, they love the food, they love the people. And that's why we stay in our community and that's why it's small. Yes, we want it to grow, but it's, realistically, it's not, it's not going to get like San Antonio. So we got to keep that in our head when we're doing these decisions. If we want the high life, then we have to go get it. We got to move. My, all my family moved. I'm the only one that stayed with my mom and dad, you know? But because I like the small-town living, the affordable living, the small-town living, and I want to know where my kids go. I want to know who's who. So that's what we got to just take into consideration here. And I'm going to be here and I'm going to be what the people want me to do. And it may not be what I want, want, but I'm here for them. And it may not be what is best interest for me at this time, but I'm here, people call me and you got a meeting. Don't forget, you know? I'll vote you out next time, you know? That's how we get here. But we got to take that into consideration. And if we, our employees need more training, let's give it to them. Let's give it, it's not going to cost us nothing. We don't need twenty people at the water bill. We don't need twenty people doing the jobs in one office. We can all do it. It's been done, I saw it. I was here ten years ago and I saw it. So that's all we want to say.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lou. Councilmember Dennis?
Okay, yes, Mr. Arco, you mentioned a, a robust fund balance. What are you referring to? Who are you referring to?
I'm anticipating at least a one point nine million dollar fund balance in the twenty twenty for the governmental side. Not including the one point two million dollars that we're receiving from, from that, that really fund allocation. We have a one point two million after that. Operationally, if we can have six months of operations within our fund balance, that's at least a minimum to take the market, to float any kind of bonds. So that's about two point seven, two point eight million dollars. If some of those excess funds can flow into fund balance, that would be great. If we need them operationally, then, then that's, that's what's needed. If it's the will of the, of the council to, to allocate those funds to other, other needs, then that's what's needed. But from my perspective, I've got to think about what, what the, how we're going to fund the maybe sixty to eighty million dollar worth of projects going forward. So to start that, we start that in twenty twenty-one, the twenty twenty-one audit. If we can roll in some, some, a, a fund balance that's half of what's needed and our twenty-two, twenty-two audit is even better than twenty twenty-one as we go out to the market once again, then it shows at least an increase and a better financial position for us. It doesn't mean that, that, that we're meeting all our needs, but at least on paper, we would be able to, to, to sell the fact that we're in a position to, to pay for these bonds over the next thirty years.
So we need to put money in our pocket to be able to borrow money?
Exactly, it's a credit rate.
Right. Mr. Risco, do you remember the integrity audit that was done? The integrity audit that was done twenty seventeen, eighteen?
I'm, I'm sure I looked at it, but I can't make certain.
It was presented to the council. And it was, it was done on the, on the, you know, and, and that's been my question right now is I'm thinking about that audit that was done and presented to us. And then we're going back and, you know, to twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. I understand maybe twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. But, you know, we are saying we have to go back and do audits, which we did. What was that integrity audit about? Because I, I think I have a copy of that. Do you have a copy of that, sir?
The integrity audit?
Are you talking on a CAFRA?
The CAFRA audit, yeah.
CAFRA, CAFA is every, every audit you're doing is, is a CAFRA.
Every what?
Every audit that's done is, is a CAFRA year.
A CAFRA refers to the governmental financing organization that issues, the GFOA, that issues a certificate. But what was presented wasn't.
A CAFRA.
I mean, they, they tried to, tried it to be a CAFRA, but it wasn't a CAFRA. It didn't meet the standards, so it's not a CAFRA in my opinion. But it was presented as a CAFRA, comprehensive annual financial statements.
Right.
Financial report. That's, that's a CAFRA and that's, that's the acronym for, for the GFOA com, the program.
They, they do it to acknowledge them as, as, as a cert, as a certification, as some sort of acknowledgement that, hey, yeah, you cleared your audits on time. And you, you, you have, you met all the components of receiving this.
Yeah, I think, I think previous administration tried to, to submit that for, for review. I don't think it ever got off the ground. It's, it is quite, quite extensive and it's possible that going forward, we could, we could be a, a part of that program. It's nice when you go out to the, the market and you, you have a, a certificate of excellence.
So how did, how did, how did, how did we come out with flying colors on that CAFRA? And then we hadn't even submitted audits, hadn't even done audits.
I don't know if it's flying colors, I don't know who said it was flying colors.
Well, that's how it was presented to us.
Oh, no, yeah, no, I, I don't agree.
I think.
See, and I, I wish y'all had disclosed on that.
Yeah, I don't agree with that, it was.
Before this tonight, because I've always had that question and, and I've been meaning to ask, but I, I just didn't understand the, how the two are connected and how, what the parallel was. I just didn't.
The audits should be done on a yearly basis.
I understand all that process.
We, we could disagree on what a CAFRA is, agree or disagree. I'm saying that, that, you know, the three years of audits went by. So with that, it was hard, even for me, and I'll be quite frank with me, I've been here two years. It's hard for, for somebody in my position to not be able to see true financial in two years. Again, I'm not blaming any particular person, I'm just saying that, that not knowing where you are as, as a city, as a city government, three years has been a challenge. Now that we are in a position where we, I feel confident, I feel a lot better now as far as understanding our financial position. And I'll feel a lot better once we get the twenty twenty-one out of where we are financially.
We're, we're in a position right now to be able to report accurately, timely, uh, real-time, based on daily receipts and just persons, which we weren't to, you know, when I, when I first started.
Counsel. I think at the time, um, when they presented, when, I think it was last year or the year before you were here, the year before, when I, we first came in, well, and that's when we brought up the CAFER, and that they couldn't perform it because the last three years of audits were not even touched.
Well, it was done, it was done in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen.
Yeah, I, I saw it.
You saw it, right?
I saw it.
Yeah, you, you see it.
Yeah.
It's pretty.
It, it, it is pretty, uh, but like I said, I think, I think it was submitted late and it wasn't even reviewed. It wouldn't even meet the standard of a.
I think whoever did it made it look pretty at the time.
Well, yeah, it was, it's nice.
Because she hadn't done the audits for three years and was reporting to the council that everything was done.
It's, it's, it's nice, I mean, the financial statements were nice. I don't know how, I agree with what's.
That's right. I think she just presented something nice, so people.
I have, I have another question, sir. Uh, what, what, have you looked at what tax increase, what the tax increase would look like? The rates would look like to meet these, this want list?
Um, right now, I think some of the legislators, some of the legislature had changed, uh, some of the rules for municipalities. Uh, la- like last year, I'll just throw out the, the, the rollback rate. They don't call it rollback rate no more, but it, whatever we'd call it, uh, was at one point zero one. Uh, we adopted it at eight point eight six six. So, um, that's, that's part of, uh, the financing strategy going forward. Anytime we don't, anytime a municipality doesn't adopt the, the rollback rate, uh, you leave money on the table. And I, and I understand the, the politics and I understand the constituents and, and the demographics of, of the city. But it, it does, it will affect our ability to, to, this year. It will reduce our point eight six six. You know, it, it, simply because of the way it works. You don't need it, you, you can't increase it anymore. But if you had increased it, well, then that's where, that's our basis, and the increases are cumulative.
And I think if you look at that, and I think Santos showed, I, I forgot about the slide, but the presentation that just moved me as far as utilities. Um, utilities rates, as you know, comparatively to all the communities around you, uh, whether they're spread or smaller than us, um, are the lowest, the lowest probably in the entire area. I think we're second or third to the lowest.
The third.
Uh, and so with that, again, again, looking at a combination of increasing utility rates, um, I, I, I think, to me, my strategy would be somewhat similar to what Santos is saying, but there has to be that discussion as far as increasing utility rates. Because if you recall, we, we, we did away with the surcharge and we came back and, and restructured rates as best we could, with, with the premise and understanding that those assumptions don't include any, any increases as far as salaries, and it didn't include anything as far as the future projects. So, if we're gonna, if we're gonna issue more debt, I'm saying that part of what we're gonna have to look at is, again, uh, do we fund it through the general fund side, or do we fund it through the uti- utility side? Utility side, we know, we know for a fact are some of the lowest in the entire area. So, that, that to me is, is, is more of a, a user, you know, user service. You're gonna, of course, you're gonna charge more, bigger the customer. And ideally, the way I see interpreted this, see this is, those are the customers that are gonna be paying, you know, more of the, uh, more of the load, if you will. Um, but, uh, but that's what I look at, is a combination of, of utility increases. If we know that we're the lowest or one of the lowest, uh, that's something to look at.
Okay, I understand that, but my question was, what, what does it gonna look like? Eighty-six cents to a hundred dollars up to a dollar one? Is that what you mentioned?
That score was last year, and, and I anticipated, unless they change the formula, uh, I'm not a, a tax rate ex- expert, but I just dropped in the numbers into the worksheet.
But we already adopted that for five years.
Well, we adopted, adopted the, the, the utility.
So.
Yeah, are we talking about tax rate or?
I'm talking about the tax rate, yeah.
Yeah, tax rate, yeah.
Yeah, we already adopted it for five years, so if you add to it, you're gonna add two on top of what we've already adopted.
You, you adopted.
Utility rates.
You adopted utility rates for five years.
For five years.
But you didn't adopt the ta- the tax rate, not the utility.
Okay.
So, uh, every, just let me, I'll put it in perspective. Um, every, the base here is the values as far as the city. We don't have, and I'm, I, I guess I spent four years as a tax assessor collector, so I know a little bit about taxes. But I can tell you this, that there's two things that you look at, of course, is your tax rate and your values. Our values are sitting below the three hundred million. Per yield, per penny, and I think I mentioned this to the mayor, if you increase taxes a penny, let's just assume that it's talking in pennies here. Uh, your taxes go up to ninety cents. Your yield as far as what you bring in, as far as, uh, dollars, is about thirty to thirty-five thousand dollars. So, that's what you're bringing in, so you, if you say, hey, we're gonna, we wanna increase, uh, we wanna meet this, whatever, this three hundred thousand dollars, you increase it by ten pennies. Put you at ninety-nine cents as your tax rate. I'm giving you an estimate, again, these are not, the numbers are set in stone, but I'm giving you an estimate based on the yield that you, that you, that you get per penny. Uh, so that's what, that's what it boils down to. On your utility side, I'm saying you're more, it's more advantageous, because again, your, your utility rates are so low. The utility rates of the city are low. And so, that's where you really need to, we need to come back and look at, again, our structure. And I know that we, we address some things with the understanding that when we're gonna make big increases, that was, that was a directive I gave to the council last year.
And just, just roughly, guys, based on the stuff that I got, I ran some numbers on that, um, a ten cent increase, um, again, would get us roughly three hundred thousand dollars. And that would, again, this isn't, isn't audited, so it would add fifty dollars to a fifty thousand dollar house. It would add a hundred dollars to a hundred thousand dollar house, roughly, just real roughly, to give you kind of an idea. And that would add three hundred thousand to our budget. But when we come back, we'll have those, we'll have the, we'll have some scenarios on what a rate increase, per rated, so you can look and see what a tax increase per rated would do as far as additional funds, and would do to a traditional house in San Antonio, et cetera, in Pierceaw, so that you can kinda get your idea. So, um, okay, uh, you, any other questions here?
No, not today.
I have one.
Okay, I'm gonna let it ride, go through, I'll come back to you. All right, Counsel.
Well, they already answered a couple of them, but, uh, you know, uh, I'm gonna go ahead and write along on what, uh, Councilwoman and Nunderson, Councilwoman, uh, Pravino over there, we're talking about the utilities, the overage, I mean, overdue utilities. I think we should, you know, I don't know where we stand with that, but, you know, you would cut them off, cause that time you hear, you hear it on the street, you know, say, ah, yeah, you know, they're writing, I'm writing them, you know? And, uh, I think we should cut them off and, and, uh, not get into that depth, you know? Uh, you know, maybe just give them like ten days and that's it. But other than that, I mean, that's, that's all becoming I got. They answered a couple of my questions.
Or some kind of agreement, like the, the ones that we've had before.
Are we, are we still doing the agreements, sir?
Excuse me?
The pay is.
Oh, yes, uh, we, we, I, I believe starting June first, we did start the program up again. We, we did send out red tags, uh, for, uh, delinquent accounts, and we have started to positive.
How did that work? How did that for me there? I don't know on that plan.
The plan, uh, depending on the, on the, on the customer, the, the amount of the delinquency, we, we go from six to twelve months, uh, with a twenty percent down.
Well, you have to take into consideration, guys. We were in a pandemic for a year.
No, we understand that.
People did not pay for a year.
Yeah, but like Briz said, I mean, they, we've all had.
No, but we have, we had an ordinance in place. We had an ordinance in place that they weren't paying their bills. They have to come back in here and pay their bills.
And, and everyone has had that, that opportunity.
And people are going in there and they're paying their bills.
Right.
But we have to take into consideration, this is, if the ones that are old for ten years, five years, of course. But the people that.
Well, that, that's what I'm talking about, I mean, that's not necessarily.
But the people, yeah, but we have people in there that we did not turn off their water because we agreed as a council. And we gotta remember, people voted in here to help them. And we could get larger number of numbers, you know, a larger number of votes, and every year it's gonna change because of our actions. And we gotta sit here and take into consideration that we were in a pandemic. We can't just say, ch- shut these people off. You don't know what it is. Y'all kept y'all's jobs. These people didn't keep their jobs, you know?
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead.
Wow. No, that's finished.
Let's finish, okay. Um, yes, Counsel, all right, Counselwoman.
Yeah, I would have been thinking about.
Okay.
I have one more comment on the tax increase.
Okay.
So, when we do the tax increase, we need to take into consideration is that people that rent homes out. If you're looking at renting a home, a three-bedroom home at six hundred and fifty dollars, and you raise your taxes, because three years ago, the taxes were raised every year. So, just the last two years, we have not touched the, the taxes. We raised the taxes five, three years, the last two years that I've been here, we have not raised the taxes but that one percent. But prior to that, three years, they were raised every year, because we spent the crap load of bond money, we got loans out, and nothing got done. I, and you raise the taxes. You look at a house at six hundred and fifty dollars a month, the owner of that home profits. After everything said and done, two hundred dollars a year. That's not even two days of work. So, we, when we look into tax increase, we also gotta consider that eighty percent of these people in Pierceaw rent homes. They're renters. We raise these taxes, their rent's going up. And what we need to do is figure out a way, instead of spending two hundred thousand dollars on a chamber of commerce, and we're short nine hundred thousand in our budget, we don't need to renovate the chamber of commerce for two hundred thousand dollars and set that aside. There's no way. We have six million dollars in streets, and we, at six hundred thousand dollars in street, but we're working on a main, um, a, a drainage system. We gotta cut this off, cut this off to fix this. So, next year we come in, we raise the tax up another one percent, which is a ten dollar, fifty dollar on the hundred dollar, depending on what the house is worth. And remember, the appraising of these homes are ridiculous. You can see a house that's appraised at a hundred fifty thousand, you walk in that house, it's worth fifty thousand. And then we're gonna hurt the West Side. Y'all gotta remember, these people are gonna lose their home for five dollars, they'll lose their home. And remember, they vote for us.
All right, Counsel.
Uh, real quick, um, going, going on, on the comments you're making, uh, Councilwoman. Um, for a long time, Pierceaw was, I think we were at thirty-nine cents for every hundred dollars, as that was a tax rate, for a long time. And then we raised it up to sixty-two cents, and then we went up, uh, a couple of times after that, and we were eight-six cents. But never did we go up to where we could have gone, okay? And, uh, you know, we, we have to keep that in mind. Uh, the other thing that you mentioned is that nothing was done with the bond money, a lot was done with bond, bond money. You know, uh, and all those projects, uh, are in place, and they're serving the needs of the community.
Thank you. Hey, guys, I, I, I know I've talked a little bit, thrown out some stuff, but I, I have a comment. I wanna, wanna just comment with this as we close, um, the talks about the budget tonight. But thank you very much for each of your input, and this is crucial. And, and I'll, I'll just remind you guys that dialogue is important, and it's, it's essential to what we do here in democracy. So, um, it, it all matters, what we're gonna do, to tell you what we're gonna do as a council, is we're going to prioritize how we all feel, and then we all get the vote in the direction that we're gonna take. So, I am, I very much understand, again, I have, I have appreciated Santos and Fred in really getting a chance to look at this. And so, I think we have to look at all options on the table. We have to look at our rates, we have to look at our taxes. And again, we're not gonna have the master comprehensive plan until the, uh, sometime in next budget year. Um, but that's gonna be a great tool for us to help determine, you know, we can use that old L and V study. We can use our department men, we can use our management, and we can use this new study to prioritize and determine what we need. But what I can assure you is these projects are not gonna be able to be funded as we go. These are gonna be five million, eight million, ten million dollar projects, and we cannot, we cannot do them all at one time. But we may not be able to do them on our tenure, but we can identify and provide a guideline. So, I think we have to look at all of these aspects. We have to look at all of our tools on the table. And, and I feel confident that we'll come to the middle-of-the-road figure where we can, you know, continue to provide, Santos is exactly right, guys, we don't wanna get in a situation where we gotta blow water. You know, we don't wanna get there. And so, we have to, and you and I appreciate your comment, you know, you, you have to, you have to have money, you know, in order to borrow money, and, and from a banker, I've heard that about a hundred fifty-seven bazillion times, maybe more. But, but the financial stability of the borrower is crucial to your rating, and so we have to have some kind of surplus. Um, it, it has to be plus just, um, we don't wanna live that way. We don't want that kind of, of a well go out and we can't fix it. Or heaven forbid, something terrible happened with the sewer plant and we can't dispose of our waste without the ability to fix that. So, that is critical, that we have those funds for a number of reasons, not just our credit rating, but it'll apply hugely to that. But anyway, so I, I'm excited about this process and, um, excited too. And, and trust me, we will go in-depth, and we'll go in-depth as you wanna go. And each, each person will, will, will hammer this out. But again, I'm gonna say, we can hammer out a big stuff out in August. So, in, in, excuse me, in July. In August, it needs to be fine-tuned, because we can't go back and recreate. So, think about those big picture things for next month. So, thank you guys very much. We're gonna conclude our preliminary budget with that. We're gonna hit real quick on four B, and then we're gonna smoke through five A and E, and then we're gonna adjourn. So, uh, moving out, we don't need a motion to disclose, this is not an action item, so, uh, Mr. Fred, if you would talk about four B, just quickly.
Okay.
Again, Mayor and Council, this item, uh, I know that two things, I wanna make sure that, at the end of the budget, and one thing that wasn't, I don't think we discussed, and part of this discussion, was, uh, I know we've talked about it in the past, with good economic development, and our, um, our, our, what we wanna move forward with as far as economic development, um, some, and how we wanna potentially incentivize people that wanna come and do business. That's not in the budget, it can't, okay? So, again, part of this discussion is, is to discuss that. The other piece that I know that was, uh, we've talked about, uh, maybe even individually, is housing. That is not, again, that is not part of the budget, but it is something that, in my opinion, as far as a goal, uh, if that's the direction of the council, I think that's, that's part of something we should probably include in the budget. Uh, Bobby and I are gonna, I'm, I'm gonna take turns, I'm, I'll go first with this. The four B, um, four aims, our sales tax, excuse me, let me go back. Our economic development corporations, what you have in there is basically, um, an entity that can be created by the city, um, with, when you utilize sales tax. And the reason I felt it was important right now to address this is because you do, uh, again, financially, as you can see with the revenues, we are in a better position. Uh, it's, again, it's not great, it's not great, but it is better. And so, one way to address economic development, uh, or promoting economic development is through EDC. I'll, I'll pass it over to Bobby. I think we're gonna let y'all watch a little small video, but, but I'll let Bobby talk about some of the things that he has, as far as that goes.
Good evening, uh, Council. One of the things that, that we had discussed was, you know, what, what could we find in terms of the presentation? One of the best presentations was, was actually provided and is, you know, on the, um, Controller's website. The Controller's office is the office that's charged in the state of Texas with actually industry monitoring, reporting, compiling, et cetera, with respect to the, the, uh, the four A and the four B, economic development corporations. Those are sales tax-based corporations where, under chapters five oh one, chapters five oh two, three, uh, actually, three, four, and five, um, of the local government code, it allows for cities and counties to conduct an election, to essentially pass an economic development sales tax. Now, as all of you know, I'm sure, the state sales tax is six point twenty-five percent. Maximum sales tax in Texas is eight point twenty-five percent. Local sales tax is capped at two percent. That is the maximum that a city and county combined can impose as a local sales tax is two percent. You are at two percent. A lot of cities are. Uh, Frio County gets fifty, actually gets point five. The city gets one point five, and that was done decades ago. But basically, you're capped at two. The only way that you could have an economic development sales tax corporation, if that's what you choose to do, is to have an election to establish you. You'd have to do that regardless, even if you weren't capped. But one of the things moving forward you would have to do, if you wanted to go this route, is you'd actually have to decide as a council to release some of that one and a half cents, um, one and a half cent sales tax back to, uh, a successful election and dedicate that to economic development. So, there is a twenty-two minute video that is on the website.
No.
We're only gonna, we're only gonna.
Outside, no, I can watch videos too. I can read and watch videos.
Exactly. So, a- and that's one of the things we're gonna mention, there's a lot of what I wanna, everything I'm gonna talk about is on the website, and easy to navigate. Now, um, the city manager did indicate that he wanted us to watch about, I think about five, six minutes of that.
Four, five minutes, it's not gonna be long.
Is this the type B and the type A economic development?
It's actually both. It's actually both, yeah, four A and four B.
Cause the type B can help the housing, the affordable housing.
Yes, exactly.
Part of this.
Okay.
That is correct.
We're not gonna watch twenty-two minutes.
If, 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 if you're okay to watch about four or five minutes, uh.
I'll cut it off.
Fred was gonna, Fred was gonna tell it really quick.
Yeah, let's just watch.
Yeah, cause it's too long to watch.
The popcorn, the lights.
Y'all are not gonna feed us again though. I guess it's not in the budget.
Thank you for your interest in the economic development sales tax program. I'm Russell Galligan, the Senior Economic Development Analyst at the Texas State Controller's Office. We will discuss various aspects of the sales tax for economic development, beginning with the background and legislative history, followed by the elections process, creating the corporation, the project approval process, and the difference between type A and type B projects. We will also cover various project limitations and review the reporting requirements. The sales tax for economic development is one of several optional municipal sales taxes cities may impose in their communities with voter approval. The Development Corporation Act was authorized by the legislature in nineteen seventy-nine to allow cities to promote economic development in their communities. However, little progress was made over the succeeding decade until nineteen eighty-nine, when cities were given the option to fund economic development projects with sales tax revenue, creating the four A corporation. In nineteen ninety-one, the legislature set increments for the sales tax ranging from one-eighth to one-half of one percent, and creating the four B corporation to expand eligible project types. The first four B project was the Texas Rangers baseball stadium located in Arlington. In two thousand nine, the act was recodified to the local government code, chapters five oh one to five oh five. This resulted in changing the names of the corporations from four A and four B to type A and type B. To date, cities have created more than seven hundred and twenty type A and type B economic development corporations, also known as EDCs. They provide the largest single source of revenue for municipal economic development in Texas. Currently, two hundred and five cities impose the type A sales tax, five hundred and fifteen cities impose the type B sales tax, one hundred and twenty-five cities have both types corporations. Annual sales tax receipts for type A corporations were two hundred and eighty-two million dollars in fiscal twenty seventeen. Type B receipts were more than four hundred and eighty-one million dollars. About sixty percent of type A and type B cities have populations of less than five thousand. Which cities have economic development corporations funded by local sales taxes? The red dots on the map on the left show the locations of type A corporations in the state. The map on the right shows the locations of cities with type B corporations designated in blue. You will note the distribution of corporations is similar whether type A or type B, with concentrations in the major metropolitan areas. Additionally, its obvious type B corporations are much more numerous. On this map, the blue pens designate the one hundred and twenty-five cities collecting both a type A and a type B economic development sales tax. By law, each city has two separate boards of directors, one to administer the type A sales tax, and a second board of directors to oversee the type B sales tax. Type A and type B sales tax for economic development may be imposed in increments of one-eighth of one percent. It's important to remember that the total combined local sales tax in any area cannot exceed two percent. This is the total combination of all local sales taxes from all entities in the jurisdiction, including cities, counties, and special purpose districts. If you're unsure of the local sales tax rate in your area, there's a tax rate locator tool on the Controller's website at comptroller dot Texas dot G O V. As with all local sales taxes, an election is required by statute before the tax can be imposed and the economic development corporation can be created. The following section will describe the elections process. Before the election to impose the sales tax, there are several steps a city must complete. First, the city council must adopt an ordinance calling an election on before the seventy-eighth day prior to the election date. Deadlines are published on the website of the Secretary of State at S O S dot state dot T X dot U S. Ballot language for calling a type A sales tax election may be found in chapter five oh four of the local government code. Statute does not specify ballot language to call an election to impose a type B sales tax. The city should firmly recommend counsel to draft ballot language for a type B sales tax election. Next, the city must publish a notice of the election at least once in a newspaper of general circulation in the city between ten to thirty days before the election. The election may be held only on a uniform election date, either the first Saturday in May or the first Tuesday after the first Monday in November. No other election dates are permissible. After a successful election, the city council must call a meeting to canvass the election results eight to eleven days after the election. The election results must be recorded in the meeting minutes and include the date of the election, the ballot language, the number of votes for, the number of votes against, and the number of votes by which it passed. The city secretary should send the election results by certified mail, addressed to the Revenue Accounting Division, Tax Allocation Section at the Texas State Controller's Office. If the city has not previously imposed sales tax, the notice also should include a boundary map of the city. If the election fails, notification to the Controller's Office is not required. The city must wait at least a full year before bringing the issue to the voters again. State law describes the sales tax implementation schedule. If the election is successful and held on the first Saturday in May, the city is required to notify the Controller's Office by June thirtieth. Tax collection would begin on October first. The city would receive the first sales tax allocation from the Controller in December and each month thereafter. Similarly, if the election is held on the first Tuesday after the first Monday in November, and the city notifies the Controller's Office of the election results by December thirty-first, the sales tax would go into effect on April first. The city would receive its first payment in June. Once the post-election actions are complete, the city should create a type A corporation or a type B corporation as applicable. The following slides describe the necessary steps related to creating a corporation, establishing a board of directors, and procedural requirements specific to type A and type B corporations.
Crystal, would you mind going back to, like, the, the, the initial screen? Just prior to clicking on the video, please? I just wanted to show you what the screen looked like, uh, as, so that on your own time, you can just kind of peruse the, uh. Here we go. I don't know if you can make that. But basically, if, and Crystal has the link.
I have the link.
So everything you need to know, uh, about, uh, there's a Q and A, eligible projects, establishing, it's all there. And it's very, uh, it's very well written, and there are a couple of videos there. But essentially, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have. As I indicated, you folks are capped. Now, you have a lot of flexibility, but the reasons why these corporations exist is because it's one of the only mechanisms. It forces you, you know, as, because this can change. If you say, as, as a council, you might ask, well, can't we do all of the eligible activities and then some without creating a four A or four B? And the answer is yes. You got all the tools. You can do anything that is possible under a four A and four B. You can do it now. But what it requires is that you take that money out of general fund receipts and redirect it to economic development. So you're talking about budget tonight, it simply would mean, instead of taking that one and a half cents from your sales tax, you know, part of that you would redirect. But what really why a lot of cities don't do it is because they want a guarantee that that money is going to go to the Controller's Office and be redirected specifically for economic development. And your hands are tied. The corporations are correct, and they have separate boards of directors. I mean, city employees and, and members of the community and city council rooms can also serve on, on the EDC boards. But it's a way of making sure that the money is used for economic development and for no other purpose. So that if councils change, if administrations change, one year you might fund economic development, and the very next year you can say, no, we're not going to. But with an EDC, you're stuck because it always takes an election to create it or to change it or to change the use of the funds. For example, San Antonio, as you know, funds pre-K for S A. They fund VIA through these, through redirecting sales taxes after an election. And then the balance, I think, three or four initiatives, uh, using an eighth of the sales tax, and the balance goes into the general fund. So you could do economic development, but if you wanted to create an EDC, it would require an election. Could you do it in November? Yes, you could. Is it tight? It, it, it's a little tight. It could be done. Could you do it next May? Of course you could. If you wanna do so as a council, because you'd have to make that decision. Now granted, residents can petition to do so, but typically it's a council that's going to decide to do so. But it also means for the next budget cycle, taking the money out of general fund, knowing that it's gonna be redirected if you have a successful election. Uh, as Councilman Rorley has indicated, type B is much more flexible. These were created to allow for infrastructure type projects initially. And then they were expanded to include other type projects. But a type B, which has more flexibility, essentially is designed to attract or retain jobs. That's the purpose of economic development. So it allows for you to allow existing businesses to expand or it allows you to provide assistance so that they stay or it allows for businesses to come into your community. But it's all economic development. It's all from your sales tax. And if you're interested in pursuing this, of course, that's something certainly entertained down the road. And I'm happy. All the questions you might have are on the website. But if you have any questions this evening, I'm happy to answer them. Or at any time, I'm happy to answer them if you wanna, uh, either ask me directly or through, uh, through the city manager.
Uh, yes, sir, Councilman Hernandez.
Uh, okay, so Florisville gets two percent. And they probably established that a long time ago, right?
Yes, a lot of them were. For example, uh, Somerset has a four A and four B. The one I was noticing, the, the, the only one you saw in this area towards Eagle Pass, that's Crystal City. And they, they, they did that one decades ago. Most cities don't have them because the council wants all the money. So Florisville doesn't.
And if you don't do nothing.
And, and I've got a couple of, I've got a couple of my cities that want them. But then when you tell them that you're capped and you're gonna have to decide to take that out of your general fund, redirect it, and account for the shortage, then all of a sudden the conversation stops. But if you're truly committed to economic development, this is a good way to go. I've had other cities say, well, we're capped, can we have an EDC anyway? And yeah, sure you can. You can have a nonprofit tax exempt economic development corporation. But then the next question is, how do you fund it? Because you don't have a funding mechanism. So you say, well, we'll have, we'll look for grants, we'll have fundraisers, we'll seek donations. What happens is it usually doesn't materialize. A lot of times, a council, if you create an EDC, the question is who's gonna be on the board? Most of the time, the council appoints themselves to serve on their EDC. And then again, it requires another meeting, and after a while, I've never seen a successful EDC. So if you have a guaranteed.
EDC that we refer to non-profit.
Yeah, I've never seen a successful non-profit. When you have a four A, four B, and the money comes in and it's there to be spent, and you can only spend it for eligible activity. And then keep in mind, even if you have a four and four A B, they have to come to you every year to approve their projects. They can't do anything without the council approving it. But still, it's a way to redirect sales tax money for economic development purposes only. And that way you can ensure that year after year, you're gonna actually have economic development in your communities.
Bobby, for, for those, for those, um, cities in which the county takes the point five, is it possible for them to get back that point five?
Uh, yes, just as ju- again, it would take an election. Uh, but i- it's hard to give it up. Once you're getting it. But you're, you're absolutely right. Very few, I mean, I actually, I was surprised when I found out that the city, that the county actually took point five. That is a, uh, a, a quarter of the, uh, the two percent. A lot of counties don't do it.
Yeah, they don't.
It's all local. I mean, meaning it's all city.
Okay, uh, yes, Councilman, Councilman Rorley.
So I've been, you know, working on this and doing my homework. I think I brought it up to Federico about three months ago about the corporation. And the reason why I brought in the corporation was 'cause I, you know, was around a few other council members from different areas. And I'm like, how do y'all do this? Like, how come we're stuck? You know, I'm tired of going to H E B and people telling me, are we gonna get that Starbucks? Are we gonna get Bill Miller's? Um, Pleasanton got it, Lyman got it, Florisville got it. So I was actually talking to a friend of mine out of Florisville, and she says, hey, not to, you know, ruffle any feathers or, you know, say anything, but y'all been in charge of economic development all this time. And y'all really haven't brought nothing. H E B, I was like, I was there, yeah, I voted against the Bateman, but we brought the H E B, you know? But it was already here from nineteen eighty-two. You know, Walmart was already here, Sonic was already here. The only thing that's come is the hotels, and they came with the oil field. So to sit here and say, what has the council done in the last twenty years economically? It's gonna be, yes, we got an apartment complex at where I work, you know? Uh, we, uh, got the Geo facility, but it's really not a lot that was brought in. Economic, and then this economic development deal with the hotel motel tax, it's not just bringing in businesses. It's also bringing in what the city can provide to people that move here so the businesses can consider us moving here because they're bringing employees. So that's what businesses always look at. Well, what does Pierceville have to offer? The school? Are their schools good? Um, do they have a rec center? Do they have a convention center? What do they have to offer? If we come and bring in Starbucks, 'cause we're bringing in management, we're bringing in employees, but what do y'all have to offer us? And with this economic development, I think we put it in their plate and they work on the deals. They're working this whole time on it while we're doing city business. And they're bringing in, and they're, they're bringing affordable housing, or they're fixing infrastructure. They're saying, this is what we can fix, we can put sewer, we can put utilities on the land. That's why people don't come. That's why H E B really didn't, I mean, Super Walmart didn't come to Pierceville. They couldn't find land with utilities, not because the council wasn't working with them. They couldn't find good land. And when, when investors are looking for good land, it means land with utilities. Uh, land with easement off the highway. Are they able to bring in that, the, the exit back? You know, good location. But I think that we've been saying economic development, economic development, and we preach it, and we, and we run with it, and we run for city council, and we're like, we're gonna bring all this stuff in, but we don't do it. So I was, you know, looking around and asking around, and these corporations, they do it. And I know that we don't wanna let go of the money, but we're not doing nothing with the money.
You know, that's, that is a, is a good point, a great presentation. And, you know, just something like one-eighth of what we're currently getting, that'd be a quarter of a million, you know? Getting it done, it is too hard, but it really funds something. So definitely something we'll be seeing again and, um, appreciate the, the, the commentary on that, and it's a great input.
Mayor, if you'd just allow me to kind of just expand a little bit on what Councilwoman Rorley was saying. She's absolutely right. That's what I want, I was alluding to, is that you have always, you have all the power, you have all the authority, you can do anything you want now. But, but it's hard to say, okay, we're gonna take it from here and use it for economic development. The EDC forces, basically, it's like forcing you to save money off the top, put it into a separate bank account, and then you're only gonna use it for what you've decided to save it for. Florisville with the Starbucks, so the same group that went to Florisville went to Pleasanton. So they went to the EDC. They went to the city, and the city, we have an EDC that can help you. So the ask was for a specific donor. And Florisville said, we've got the money in our EDC to bring you here. We can just cut a check. And that's the distinct, the, the distinction, having that fun, having that money available for use. Uh, now, what Pleasanton, who doesn't have, they have their own nonprofit EDC, which doesn't do anything and doesn't raise any. which doesn't do anything and doesn't raise any money, and they have some money. But what they did was they got the same ask for the same amount of money. But without the EDC, what was crafted there was a, like a homegrown version of EDC, which was a sales tax reimbursement agreement, which basically said, "If you come and you build and you open, then we will reimburse the sales taxes that you generate. From only those people that decide to buy your coffee, we'll give it back to you to meet that same dollar amount in the future." And they said, "We'll do it." Now, it didn't cost the city anything, and-
They know it's steamed.
Right, and it'll only cost the people that will actually buy the coffee. But we had to craft a solution to try to meet the same goal that was so much easier for Floristville to make. So again, I'm happy to answer your questions, and I'm also happy to-
I mean, thank you, thank you. It's a great, great thing for us to look at. Thank you very much. Okay, Council, we're gonna move on to item five A, uh, new business. This is discuss and consider approval of execution of professional service agreement with Santos Alacron for consulting in professional services for the city. At Pierceall, this is an action item. We do not need a motion to discuss. So commented on the table. I'm gonna let Fred take the floor, and then we'll look for Council commentary.
Mayor and Council, this is in agreement with, uh, with our soon-to-be former finance director, if, if the council approves. And so what I'm trying to do here, is I think Santos' last day is on Friday. And so what I'm trying to do is put him on, um, right now with, trying to get somebody to fill the position. It would be really hard in the middle of budget season. And on top of that, we still have audit issues that we're, we're, we're trying to finalize. So I'm asking the council, uh, if they let him stay on, if y'all allow me to let him stay on as, as a contract employee for at least... I don't anticipate him working anymore in twenty hours a week, but I do need his help, again, to, to help me, uh, help us finalize the budget. And, and I anticipate, you know, putting a, advertising for this position probably sometime in, in late August. But I, but I do need him to, to, uh, to help us out with the process, uh, even after he leaves. I believe he's, he's got his employer, his future employer. I think they're okay with it. But we'll be still giving him access to encode and some of our software, uh, to help us with, uh, with any changes and revisions that we need to make.
Council, Council, I, uh, you know, had a chance to talk with, uh, our financial director and wanted to be appreciative of what I have, not what I lost. And so, um, I'm regretful as I've come to appreciate his knowledge and expertise and appreciated what he's been able to get us to, so from a personal perspective, thank you. But I, I could just tell the council, please, w- we need this. This is not a time for us to be, uh, uh, not without that kind of oversight. And of course, when he leaves, that's gonna mean that his salary is gone, and so it won't mean any additional funds out of our budget. But, um, to me, he's very much worth this during this time. And I would like you guys to consider, um, approving this so we can cover this period, which is really critical. Any other comments?
I have a question.
Yes.
So, are you looking at doing a thirty-day contract?
It, it's just gonna be, uh, I put it, I didn't put a timeline again. Uh, I, I've, I've done advertising the position in August, so I would ask probably to run this contract through August. Uh, and I anticipate in September, uh, we hire a new finance director by then. To be quite frank, all we're going through in September pretty much is a formality to the budget review process. But in the next, again, month or two, I definitely need him to, to, to concentrate. What I would really like is for him to also, um, make sure that we close out our books for this coming year, because we, what I, what I anticipate the new finance director doing is getting us, uh, prepared for our, our twenty twenty-one budget, our twenty twenty-one, uh, audit. So I need for him to, to work out any thing that he feels is, is, is important as far as closing out our books for the end of fiscal year to get us going with the twenty twenty-one budget, uh, twenty twenty-one audit. Uh, so those are, those are gonna be my, at least for me.
So what, how many, like, I don't wanna approve a contract that's just open. If we do like a sixty to ninety day or a ninety day contract, and if the services are no longer needed before the ninety days, then the contract does not exceed? And the other question I have, are you gonna be working eight to five with your employer? Or it's just, uh, because I wanna know if we're gonna, if we're only gonna be able to have you certain hours? Because you are at a new job, so are we gonna, are you gonna be available or the twenty hours are gonna be after five?
I'd stay, uh, being flexible at, at my current, at my new position. Um, I would be able to answer phone calls, uh, answer texts throughout the day as needed. I know that, that, uh, our staff right now work from eight to five, and there are issues that would come up that would be something that, that I would be familiar with. Um, so, um, I, I can commit to fifteen to twenty hours a week mainly.
Unless I'm called over.
No, and, and I would commit to coming to council meetings and things of that nature so I can be available to discuss any, any financial aspects that, that would, would arise. Um, and basically, uh, I would help with the closing process, finish this, this, this particular audit, uh, which you'll see on Tuesday would be only the fund, financial statements. I would still need to complete the, the, the notes and, and things of that nature, and, and close the fiscal year, um, and get ready for the twenty twenty-one audit. I'd like to be able to get it out, um, by November, December of twenty twenty-one. And that would set you up, uh, going forward to, to possibly fund the debt that we, that we need to fund. Um, so it's, it's a little, uh, I would say, uh, difficult to say, well, when would I be available? I'm available if I can answer the phone.
I call him all the weekend to that address.
Yeah.
Yeah, my idea was just, you know, he has another job, and he's thanking for all your service, and you did really get us out of hot water, and I really, really appreciate that. And I hate to see you go, but as you have ventured off, so we would have to go ahead and get ready and prepare to find somebody else to fill your shoes. And be- before that, we are grateful for what you have done for us. But I just would not like to approve a contract if we were to do like ninety days, and then if for some other reason it needs to extend or it does not need to extend. We actually have a date on there. 'Cause if we do hire somebody, they're gonna come with experience, and I hope, and knowledge in this field, and not just what we've had in the past, where they come with knowledge. And, uh, where they don't need, you know, he can stay around and, you know, walk them through. 'Cause usually when you fill a position, you don't really have the person that was there before to help us out. But I know that we're in a budget time, so I would say at least ninety days. And then if we need to extend that, we could.
Mr. Villalnado, with the agreement that's written here, if, if, like, Councilwoman Rodriguez is saying, uh, you know, of course, you, you're not, you're not gonna advertise till August. You know, so you're looking at least ninety days, maybe into September. But if we allude into saying that we're gonna keep him on through the end of August, the portion about termination agreement, the, the, the ultimate term, terminate this agreement at any time given the contract or written order thereof, you know, is that, you know, let's just say that we decide to say ninety day through the, you know, through the end of August, but we decide the beginning of August, we don't have, do we have to pay him through the, through the end of, right, it's just termination right there? And then whatever hours you put in during that time?
No, Council, in, in line, uh, with the question you're asking and what, uh, Councilwoman Rodriguez, uh, had, had posed, in section three point one, we can add another sentence just to say, because the termination provision stands. Anytime the city manager wants to terminate, he can simply terminate it. But we could add at the, another sentence at the end of three point one that simply says, uh, "In no event shall the contract, uh, exceed ninety days in length." For example, ninety days, thirty days, sixty days, whatever you want. We could just add that sentence, uh, and if you wanna just give me, just provide an end date, ninety days from date of execution?
Yeah, I think ninety days would-
If you wanna do that, then-
Ninety days would not come in trouble with that.
Yeah, ninety, ninety days should get us through. The budget should get us through again. And I know that whoever is, is selected for the position is gonna have to catch up.
I was just thinking, I mean, if, if he's able to, you know, help us, and of course, you, you know, us hiring somebody for that position, I mean, would he have to maybe cross, cross him for a little bit, maybe into September? I mean, if he's able to or not.
We're, we're gonna get into that transition phase where, you're right, where we're gonna have to, you know, hire somebody and then get them to, uh, to understand where he left off, and you don't get that a lot.
So I was wondering if he's, if he's able to.
Transition with him, where he's completing the budget, completing this year's audit, and he's able to transition the audit, the information that the other employee would need to, to start the twenty twenty-one audit.
I think maybe you should start, uh, putting it already advertise the position.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not- I mean, I'll advertise the position, but Council, again, anybody that you pick right, as far as, they're not, they're not gonna be-
You're not.
No, but just so they can be here while he's here, and you don't have to extend the time. Where they start getting familiar, 'cause they don't ever get this.
Part of what I run into, Council, is I spend most of my time trying to teach them and train them what they need to do. And right now, because I, I'm limited with time, I really don't have the time to say, "Hey, this is what..."
No, and I see that, but I see where they're just, you know-
What she's asking is, is that maybe somebody could come on during this time earlier?
And they're just watching.
Or during the last thirty days that he's on still?
If, if y'all, if the council will allow, again, on my end, if y'all allow me to advertise, I know, I mean, I feel like I know of what we need as far as the staff, so that would be appreciated on my end.
Yeah.
And I, I don't, I don't anticipate, uh, again, uh, that person will come on. I, I mean, I, I anticipate that will happen, you know, in August sometime. But I feel like I have a pretty good, pretty good feel of when, when that person should come on and make the transition.
Even though I never worked, I mean, really worked with him, but, but I've heard good, good things about him, sir. And, uh, you know, we hate seeing you leave, but, you know, I mean, you guys, well, when I say that, you gotta do what you gotta do, it's, it's, it's just a, in, in a different way to say it, but, you know, best to you, congratulations. And we, you know, we look forward to, you know, ending on a really good high note.
I'm not congratulating you.
Well, no, but, but, you know, blow it up, so that's for audit, you know?
Yeah.
You know, I, I'd like, I'd just like to make a comment. Um, it's, it's bittersweet from my perspective. Uh, I'm, I was happy. I work with some good people. Uh, the council is, is, is amicable. I've worked with councils that, that aren't, uh, aren't amicable at all or, or open to anything that I say. And so it, it's, it's bittersweet from that perspective, and that's the, that's the reason, um, that I'm willing to help. Uh, yeah, there's a contract, and I, I even told Mr. Reyes, "If it doesn't get passed, I'll still help you." You know, so, uh, that's how committed, that's how committed I am to see-
I don't know how much I believe with that.
No, no, it's, it's, no, it's, it's true.
I don't know.
Yeah, no, it, it's true, simply because, uh, I, I'm committed to you guys succeeding. And, and, and that, that's, that's the only regret that I have that I can't see it finish. And, but at least we're on the right road, and if I can do anything to help, and, yeah, getting compensated, it's nice. But at the same time, um, you can call me anytime, even after the ninety days. And the guy, the new guy or the new girl that comes in that has any questions, I can walk them through. I can give advice. I'll come in and, and, and help any way I want, any way you can. You guys, uh, I'm appreciative to the, to the opportunity that you, you guys gave me, and I'll continue to give back to you guys.
Well, no, there you go. Does the char- does the charter allow for the council or does the city manager approve his resignation before we actually make a motion on, on accepting his professional services?
Uh, no, since he's an employee.
Okay.
The resignation being voluntary, it doesn't require a council, uh, consideration or approval. And, uh, if you'd like to add a termination date or an end date, just simply if you choose to, to entertain a motion to just, to add the language that the contract shall not exceed X number of days.
I think we're ready for a motion.
Okay.
There's a motion by Councilwoman, uh, Rodriguez to approve the contract for Mr. Alacron with a ninety-day termination clause added by our, uh, council. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second by, um, we'll see, Mr. Trevino. Um, all in favor, please show hands. Motion passes you now. Thank you very much. Moving on to item five B, discuss and consider ordinance number two zero two one, zero six zero four, amending the adopted budget for the fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty. This is an action item. We don't need a motion to discuss, as indicated earlier. I'll turn the floor over to our city manager.
Yes, uh, Mayor and, and Council, this item, um, I believe we got notice from HEB some earlier, I wanna say this month, I believe, uh, as far as payment, that still be for the agreed agreement. I believe the, the, that agreed agreement was set in a way of rebate, and we actually offered them property tax rebate, uh, reimbursement. Uh, I believe we're close to paying off the, uh, I think it's a ten-year timeframe. And so we'll have, I'll have to verify-
Twenty twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-two, we'll be through paying off. So we're, we're close, but, uh, anyway, this is the budget amendment to pay, um, for two years, I believe, of, of property, property tax that they've, that they've paid in that we're reimbursing them in essence. Um, that's, that's all that's happened.
So, so that I understand this is agreed upon item that we, we agreed to, and so it's money that we received. Kind of funny, I wish they would've sent it to us anyway, but they received it, and we just got to turn around and write back. That's it, that, okay, so that's what's on the table. Is there any discussion? Okay.
Can somebody tell them that we're not bad there?
Councilwoman Trevino, I will, I will nominate you to go have a conversation with Mr. Butts, and, uh-
And for the record, I voted against the baitment. So we didn't have that, we would've had that money. They got two of them.
We are, we are looking for a motion.
Motion.
There's a motion by Councilwoman Trevino. Is there a second? Second by Councilwoman Hernandez. All in favor? It looks like everybody is, and now finally, folks, we're gonna look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
There's a motion by, uh, Councilwoman Rodriguez, a second by Councilwoman Hernandez, and everybody's in favor. Thank you, guys. We've got out under three hours.